We would like to, I'd like to thank you for having us here and thank you for supporting our project. And I'm going to introduce the Young Activist Club. This is Margot, Kira, Emily, Kate, and Clara, Julian, and Alex. Some additional people are Eva and Patrick. And Chimmy and Jep Nieder also members.
And you are?
Heather Demaca. So, let's start.
Styrofoam has a big carbon footprint. All plastics are made out of oil. When you use oil, it creates, it makes carbon go into the atmosphere which heats up the air. That makes global warming. Global warming is bad for the environment.
The styrofoam trays are really bad because you can't, bad for the environment because you can't recycle them. Because they're styrofoam and it's just gonna, and they can't biodegrade. It would just sit in the ground waiting and when, so you have to burn them in the incinerator. And the leftover stuff gets washed into the streets which go to the sewers which leads to the sea.
That is one day's waste. They're all stacked up. Here's how's my brother. He is five feet tall.
My name is Jep Nieder and I made the calculations on the costs. Our school spends $3,700 on styrofoam trays each year. Another 1,600 on plastic forks. A rebuilt washer will cost $2,000 to $4,000. And the washable trays will cost another $1,200. For the 360 we need, we could pay for it and from the savings in not buying styrofoam trays and plastic forks.
I'd like to thank you again for listening to our ideas. And I completely agree with what's being said here. And I believe that styrofoam trays should not be used. It is polluting our environment where we live.
And of course, we have come up with a solution to not using styrofoam trays.
That's good.
These, plastic trays. Um, yeah, basically, I don't know, few years worth of, these could last a few years and they would cost less than a few weeks' worth of styrofoam trays.
Good.
Yeah. Um, okay. Bye.
We got over 400 signatures of people in the community. And we have a copy for our council members and the mayor. So, yes. And then anyone who hasn't signed the petition, who wants to can sign this. So, come see me if you want to sign the petition after. Um, I first, I first wanted to thank all of you for supporting us and the resolution we're doing. And, um, we want to tell you how much the community supported us. We got a lot, we got a few letters from people. And I'm gonna read one of them from Julie Andrews, but not the one that's famous. A different one. Um, so, this is what she said. She said, well, she's writing it to me. Um, Kate, enclose the check for a very worthy cause, a pilot for the county, then country, then the world. Thank you so mu, and also, thank you so much for your support. Most of you.
We have already raised more than $9,000, but we are trying to raise more. Please come to the fundraiser at Mark's Kitchen Tuesday, June 16th from noon to 9:00 PM. Mark will donate 15% of what we spend toward our project.
In conclusion, thank you for your support and for considering this important resolution. The county does not want us to install a dishwasher. They want us to continue using styrofoam trays. We really need your help to convince the county to support us. It is our best intention to change the environment around us into a far better one. One where people will be able to live without the gas of pollution filling their lungs. We work toward the goal of making a new world. One with, one with bright blue skies unlike the gray one from which gas fumes hover in the air. We look toward the dream of a new world with fresh air and clean fields. You can see miles beyond the smoke rising from the incinerator. You could help us, you could allow us to, you could help us to another step, a vast step toward our future in which rest our best intentions. Thank you for your time. We look forward to your recognition in our goal.
I believe economically and environmentally speaking, this plastic trays would be the best decision. Because, um, the, the cost of the styrofoam trays are, are more than the dishwasher and the trays added up together. So technically speaking, if you wanted a dishwasher that polluted nothing, well, maybe the emissions it uses to, to clean the trays, you would have a better chance with this. Bye.
Is there anybody else? Has everybody finished?
About the mosaics, my, I don't think kids should do it because my friend's sister cut her finger and had to get stitches.
I, I think what I'd like to do, just to kind of capture the, the energy of the young activists who've been here, I think I would just like to move quickly forward in our agenda. I've gotta find the item number here. Is it one? All right. If we can just briefly move forward to our agenda item number one and we will take that resolution up so that we can help get this all wrapped up and get folks home if you want to go home. And that way you'll be ready for school tomorrow. I assume you still have school?
Yes.
That's okay. So...
Move the ordinance.
I, I think councilmember, councilmembers Clay and Robinson will have to fight it out for who's the mover and who's the secondor.
I'm not fighting it out.
My daughter went there first.
Somebody else want to jump in? Councilmember Clay moved the, the resolution and councilmember Robinson seconded.
That's fine.
And what I'd like to do is, I don't want to take the time to read all the whereas's, but I would like to read the therefore's in the, in the resolution which says what, what we think and what we're going to do. So let me just read those four resolve clauses. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Tacoma Park commends the members of the Young Activist Club of Piney Branch Elementary School for their work in analyzing the issues and making the connection between the use of petroleum-based disposable food service products and the costs to humans, the environment, and the climate related to the use of these products. And be it further resolved that the city council supports the Piney Branch Elementary School, its PTA, and the Young Activist Club in their proposal to become a pilot school in replacing single-use polystyrene trays and flatware with durable reusable trays, flatware, and a dishwashing system before the start of the 2009-2010 academic year. And be it further resolved that the city council asks the administration and staff of Montgomery County Public Schools to support the efforts of the PTA and the Young Activist Club by restricting the use of single-use polystyrene trays and flatware and replacing them with durable and reusable trays, flatware, and a dishwashing system. And be it further resolved that pending completion of the pilot year, the city council supports provision of funding for Montgomery County Public Schools to facilitate continuation of the program. And so, is there any council comment on this resolution? Councilmember Robinson?
Are there, does anyone know if there are dishwashers in any other school in Montgomery County?
Yes, there are not.
There, yes, there are, no.
There are not.
There are no.
And there are not.
And so, that means we would be asking Montgomery County to set some sort of precedent in having a dishwasher in a school?
A pilot project.
A pilot project. Has anyone thought about whether other schools might take this up and do the same?
Well, yes, there's a school in Rochester, New York that has MRI switches.
Oh, could you, could you go to the microphone and we ask that people who have Congress speak in the mic?
Um, there's a school in Rochester, New York that has already started using a dishwasher and reusable trays. Not only have more kids started buying lunch after that, but also the kids say that the food tastes better.
Oh, and there's also a school in West Virginia that's doing the same thing.
West Virginia?
Also, yeah, actually, it's 28 schools in West Virginia. Right, in Berkeley County.
Thank you. That was helpful to know.
We rest our case.
Councilmember Clay?
I, we had plastic trays at my elementary school when I was in elementary school in Mariposa in California. And I liked them so much that I have four replicas at home in blue, pink, orange, and red. So I'm a big fan of the plastic tray. It looks just like that except blue, pink, orange, and red. So what I wanted to say though, is that what I didn't hear in your analysis, which is very well considered, is what the change in staffing costs are, would be for this. And so, you want to be ready for all the different questions that they're gonna ask you when you go before whatever board or group it is you go before. I don't know if it's the county council or if it's gonna be the school board. But you might want to think about that and get somebody with some experience at the school to tell you what you think that cost would be. So you're prepared with that information. They don't catch you off guard. I don't know if any of the other council members can think of some other things. I don't know how, if the water and heating costs would be negligible. They have to already have hot water there. So, that, that's something that I would think about and maybe think about any other questions that they might ask you. Thank you again for coming.
Councilmember Snipper?
Do you want an answer?
Do I want an answer? No, I don't need an answer. I don't have to make the fiscal decision. I'm just pointing out that when you go...
We have answers.
You should have the answer.
Good. We're glad you have the answers. Councilmember Snipper?
Thank you. Just to encourage the adults in the room, so my cafeteria in the building where I work uses plastic trays. I've been unable to convince them to at least use compostable disposable trays, although we tried working on that, still working on that. We have not been able to convince them to use reusable trays. However, I use a reusable tray. So I got a lunch tray of my own and I carry it to the cafeteria every day. And then I eat my lunch and then I rinse that tray off and use it again the next day. That's for the adults.
Any other comments? Okay, all those, before we do that, I'll just make sure that, is there anybody else who wants to comment on the resolution?
I just wanted to say that I won't really have to come here if I want to answer any questions because the mayor and Colleen live close to me.
Thank you, Lucia.
I do, I do feel compelled to back up the Young Activist Club. They've done a remarkable job addressing all of the issues, most of the issues that have come before the council. I want to emphasize that this is seemingly an insignificant decision tonight to endorse an environmental, economically positive alternative in this age of consideration of global warming and environmental concerns and health, safety issues. But the real piece here is that we're also talking about our bigger, a bigger issue of consumption in general. And it's very important that we are able to stand up and say that the emperor has no clothes. That plastic, that the choice to use a toxic petroleum-based, non-recyclable material for a momentary flash in the pan, if you will, to get a prepackaged lunch to a table in an elementary school and then to have to pay again to have it disposed is a bad, was a bad decision. And it is imperative that we do a pilot project to show that it will be both economically and environmentally and communatively, if we will, positive to switch back to a non-disposable way of dealing with our lunch issues. And so, the, really, the emperor is naked. Plastics are not a sustainable green alternative. And I really appreciate that the city council here is willing to take on this issue in this small way to support a pilot program in Montgomery County, which is a huge county and has 200 schools. So in this small way, we actually strike a positive footstep, if you will, on the direction to a green and sustainable future. And so we shouldn't underestimate this small step and we should be very clear that it is a pilot project and we will then be able to analyze the whole picture of what makes this just such a compelling and progressive step to take. Thanks.
Thank you, Nadine. Councilmember Wright?
Just to like sort of put that in perspective, as I look at those trays and I think of the 200 schools, probably in a week this entire room would be filled with trays from, from just one week of use by all those schools. So I, it's imperative that we pass this. It's imperative that the county approves this pilot project and then it can be rolled out to other schools in the future.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'm on the same wavelength as, councilmember Wright, I'm a numbers guy and I'd love to know how many trays get used in Montgomery County in one year?
5.265 million.
5.265 million?
I think that's underestimated because they serve 12.7 million deals.
Ah. Well, thank you for that.
So, sounds like at, at least five million trays a year and potentially double that.
It's 55,000 lunches a day, so...
It's a lot of styrofoam.
This one tray would have...
Into the microphone.
This one tray would have more use than all of those trays.
Good point.
So, yeah.
I think it's time to vote on the resolution. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? It passes unanimously. And I commend all of you for your hard work and your great research and the wonderful turnout tonight. And what we'd like to do is, we'd like to give the Young Activist Club a nice presentation copy of the resolution in a, you know, mount it up in a nice little frame so that you can take it with you when you go and talk to the Board of Education and you can hang it at the school, wherever you might hang it. And so, we don't have that ready tonight, but we will have it ready tomorrow. And I don't know if a group from the Young Activist Club would like to come by tomorrow and get that, but you're welcome to do so. And if tomorrow isn't a good day, just let us know which day. And you can come get that and be ready to take it with you as you go on to the next steps in fighting the good fight. So, thank you all. We, we will now go back and finish public comment.
I'm Chuck Thomas from Tacoma Park, back to speak again about the school boundary process. There's only two days left to persuade the superintendent to expand and extend the process to include representation from all affected neighborhoods. So I wanted to take this opportunity to read in for the record my 12-point assessment of what's wrong with the process. One, the process did not reach many affected families. Families with kids under five are especially affected, but they were usually not yet involved with the local PTA on which the school system relied for input. Notices were sent to homeowners associations, but not renters associations, and families and homes that are not registered with the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission. Most affected families are not in homeowners associations. Two, the school system did not ensure that each affected neighborhood had a seat on the Boundary Advisory Committee. Options were being generated affecting families who were unaware that these discussions were even happening. Nobody at the table even knew that my neighborhood was part of the city of Tacoma Park. Worse, the most economically disadvantaged neighborhood in the city, east of New Hampshire Avenue, AKA SC5, did not have a seat at the table. Three, the school system relied on the PTA representatives from each of the six affected schools to generate input from every affected neighborhood. Unfortunately, the system did not provide the time, resources, guidance, or other assistance to enable the Sligo Creek PTA representatives to obtain any substantial input from SC5. Four, similarly, the East Silver Spring PTA had three new options sprung on them, including options four and five which would displace their neighborhoods with only three weeks to obtain substantial input from families with language and cultural barriers. Five, every possible option was doomed to fail the needs of the Tacoma Park Middle School from the get-go. Despite the middle school's capacity of 863, the two feeder elementary schools, PBEs and ESSEs, have a combined capacity of 1,106. If those schools are at a combined minimum capacity of 80%, 884 students, it would put the middle school over capacity. The facilities planning failure pushed the problem onto us. Despite this, six, despite the school system's stated criteria of respecting community boundaries, the school system's map that was presented to the advisory committee did not superimpose the boundaries of the city of Tacoma Park. We talked about that already. Number seven, further, the map did not provide numbers as to how many affected kids were in each zone. The advisory committee was limited to general ideas without being able to brainstorm creative ideas with maximum data available at the time. Instead, the process involved a nameless bureaucrat in the county capital 30 minutes away developing options to present to the advisors. This top-down process strangled the possibility of consensus building toward a win-win option amongst all affected school neighborhoods. Eight, even the documents governing the process state that a maximum of 10 options are allowed. Our community, our communities were only provided with a total of six options. Further, two of these three options were not even viable by the standards set forth for this particular boundary study that is alleviating overcrowding at Sligo Creek. Our communities were presented with less than half of the stated number of viable options. Nine, the governing documents do not prescribe a June 10th deadline. That is completely up to the Director of Long Range Planning who can be overridden by his boss, the school superintendent. There's no reason to refrain from extending the deadline to September 10th, still giving the superintendent a month to read everything before making his decision. There's just three more. I'll see if I can quickly summarize. The Director of Long Range Planning was unresponsive to the concerns raised at Tacoma Park Elementary. PTA representative was uncomfortable with the lack of representation of the SC5 neighborhood. You can see stoptheprocess.org for a video about that. Also unresponsive to, at the, at the final meeting, a Sligo Creek mom in that zone said that quote, "The black kids are complaining that they're getting kicked out of the Sligo Creek Math and Science Academy." And at that meeting, the director again just let that kind of roll right off, didn't even address it. And 12, with the sole exception of SC4, every neighborhood that's facing displacement is very, very unhappy about it. Yet the Sligo Creek PTA reps from SC4 are assuming, and the director is accepting, that the SC5 neighborhood wants to get displaced from their current school assignment and nobody knows since they are unrepresented. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll leave copies right over here.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Jim Epstein. I'm a resident at 4 Barclay Avenue. I am about a 17-year resident of Tacoma Park and a native Washingtonian. So I hold this neighborhood very dear to my heart. I am also chairman of the Board of DC Greenworks. And I am coming before you because I would like to suggest that we have an interesting and unique opportunity to work with DC Greenworks to install a green roof next door here and do it in a way that involves the community. We could work with the Department of Public Works to find ways to make it educational not only for those who are installing it, but for educational for those who come and visit. We could develop a curriculum for the schools to learn about green roofs and all the benefits of green roofs. Excuse me, DC Greenworks and also would be happy to work with the county, with the city council on other opportunities for green roofs on other buildings or on this building. In fact, there is, I understand you all are interested in solar panels. There is a great opportunity for putting green roofs and solar panels together because green roofs provide a cooler environment in which solar panels can work more efficiently. So in a cooler environment, solar panels are, can be as much as 15% more efficient. So there's some great opportunities in that regard as well. Finally, I understand you all are interested in considering ways to, to screen the, the moat, I guess, I don't know, I don't know how to describe it more...
That's a good description.
Appropriately, but it's probably the most appropriate one. But there's some, some great opportunities to use green wall technology, which is literally taking green roofs and putting them vertical and incorporating vines to perhaps run across them. But I think there's a lot of interesting possibilities and I would be happy to work with the county and, oh, sorry, the city and using the resources that DC Greenworks has to get a community involved in the actual installation of green roofs, learning about them, educating people about them. So, dcgreenworks.org is the name of the organization. And I'd be, since I'm a resident, I'd be happy to find ways to work with you. And actually, very similarly to what you just did on your, on your mural, it's a very similar process. It's sort of like, instead of a barn raising, it's a roof raising. So, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. And if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you for coming forward and thank you for your offer. And I imagine we'd like to explore some possibilities. And if, if you could contact the Public Works Director, that would, that would probably be a good way to go.
I actually took, took the liberty to, to call today to talk to Ms. Braithwaite and talk to her about the opportunity and some of the ideas. And so she was very interested in them and she was actually quite thankful that I called her before I came to testify here. So she appreciated that.
And there, I know, I'm sure there are other residents in town who would like to know more about how to, how green roofs work and what the possibilities are for their own home. So that, making it a, kind of an outreach to the, to the community that wants to, to those of us who want to have green roofs would be, would be a great opportunity to do that. Thanks for coming.
We also talked about, you know, the public, we're looking at redoing the Public Works Department. And, and there's some architects actually looking at it soon, right? So be interesting also to engage in that process. And one of the things we talked about was figuring out a way to make a green roof, make it more environmentally sound building and incorporate a curriculum similar to like they've done at Sidwell Friends with how the building works. So definitely excited about that. Thanks for coming forward and you're amazing with us.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, the next item is the City Manager's comments?
Nothing.
Okay. Then we will move to our regular meeting agenda that we already did the first item on. So we are now at agenda item number two, which is a second reading ordinance demanding Tacoma Park Police Employees Retirement Plan by Changing the Service Retirement Benefits and Line of Duty Disability Benefits. And we talked about this at first reading. Chief, did you have anything that you needed to add or City Manager?
No, I think we covered it last, two weeks ago.
Okay. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Is there any council discussion? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, it's the second reading ordinance, so we'll need a roll call vote. Will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember...
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the second reading ordinance permitting the Tacoma Park Code Title IV Personnel Section 4 dot 40, 4 dot 40, 4 dot 04 dot 250 to add procedures for salaries above the pay bracket maximum. And again, this is a second reading, so we talked about that at first reading. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Is there any council discussion? Is there any public comment? Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Councilmember Snapper?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Next item is first reading ordinance adopting FY 2010 Pay Scale for Staff Who Are Covered by the ASME Collective Bargaining Agreement. Somebody like to introduce that?
Yes, I would.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Snapper, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Would you like to give us any information?
Well, you're on a roll, I just forgot. Let you keep on going.
Is there something you need to tell us?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What I have before you is an ordinance that amends or implements the ASME General Pay Scale and Labor and Trades Pay Scale with the market adjustment of 3.1 percent, and this will be effective July 1, 2009. The market adjustment is based on the Department Labor Wage and Salary Employment Cost Index for State and Local Government as the end of December, and that's based on the union contract.
Okay, is there any council comment? I would just like to say, as I believe I've said publicly already, that I think when, when this same ordinance comes around again next year, I think that, I will, I assume that the year-to-year change in the December index will probably be less than this year, and that will make it below 3 percent, and our current ordinance, our current rules have a floor of 3 percent.
That's correct, but the union contract is up for negotiation, so it could change.
Right, and I would just encourage the unions to think about that as they negotiate those contracts with the city, because if, if this same ordinance comes forward in a year, and I'm still sitting here, and it is brought forward with the change of less than 3 percent, and that kicks the floor of 3 percent in, I will not be voting for that, that ordinance. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of first reading this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. The next item is first reading ordinance adopting FY 2010 Pay Scale for Staff Who Are Not Covered by a Collective Bargaining Agreement. Would you like to say anything about this one?
Sure.
Should we move the ordinance?
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snapper.
Basically, whatever we have given the employees that are covered by a collective bargaining agreement, we've also honored that and given it to employees who are not covered by the collective bargaining agreement. And again, it's a 3.1 percent market adjustment.
Any comments? Again, I'll say, if it's the same next year, I will, I will be voting to support whatever the, whatever the increase is from the December of December, but I will not be voting for a floor ordinance of 3 percent. Any other comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of this first reading ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Agenda Item Six is first reading ordinance adopting FY 2010 Pay Scale for Police Officers. Would somebody like to move this ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Any comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, passes unanimously. We move to Item Number Seven, which is a resolution authorizing execution of Police Department Memorandum of Understanding between the city of Tacoma Park and Montgomery County.
Move the ordinance, or move the resolution. Memorandum. Move the memorandum, I'll get it right eventually.
It's a resolution. Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snapper. Chief?
When I was hired, we were asked to establish better relations with various jurisdictions, and one of the first things I looked at was the memorandum of understanding, and to my surprise, it was the same memorandum of understanding that I had helped, helped work and get signed back in 1995 while I was Deputy Chief of Montgomery County. So after talking with City Manager, we decided it was in the best interest of the city to update it, since it hadn't been updated in many years, and Maryland law had changed, which is very important, and talking to the city's attorney's office was important, that we established basis and proper exercise of the police, found the boundaries of each department, so that in case of a situation, we're both covered both civilly and by criminal law, which is the annotated code of Maryland. So this memorandum was drafted one time and looked at by the, both the county and ourselves, and we had our city attorney look at it, and we've added, there's been some things added to it that only a lawyer could add to it, and that obviously covers the, both police departments in the way it should be, and the fact that we haven't had one did concern me, and I think it's in the best interest of the city from a legal standpoint and from to improve the relations, which are obviously good, but this just puts it on legal ground, and I'll let our city attorney add any more.
I, I don't think the comment about lawyers was a compliment, but...
Yes, it was.
In, in any event, he, he did the first draft, and I added, I fleshed it out. He also asked why the, for instance, the 95 agreement was just signed by police chiefs under our code. I consider this an agreement between government agencies, which is essentially approved by the mayor with, or signed by the mayor with the approval of the council, which is why this is before you. If you have any specific questions, it was just meant to, you know, emphasize that Tacoma Park Police or its primary police department in the city, and the county, obviously, is the county police, but will respond as needed to the other person, other departments' emergencies, and provide assistance to each other.
Councilwoman Wright.
Does this materially change in any pragmatic or real-world way the, how we're interacting with the Montgomery County Police Department, Chief?
Well, I'll tell you this, when I read the thing that I stamped with the chief's stamp many, many years ago, I thought it was kind of short and sweet, it didn't leave a, it was kind of rough language, to be honest with you. This just improves it, and I think our relationship obviously is much better today. Not that I think it was bad back then, but I think it's a better agreement, and, and talking with our city attorney, I think from a legal standpoint, it covers us much better than what we had in place, and that's important today, especially with litigation the way it is today in our society. I think it's a better agreement which will protect both them and ourselves.
No, I, I think, actually, in answer to your question, is it was meant to better set forth what the relationship is, rather than change anything.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Snapper?
Are there any specific issues that were added? Or are just a really minor additional wording, updating?
I added some provisions about indemnity, indemnification, and, but no, I mean, it's, it was just meant to better set forth the authority of each police department within the jurisdiction and when acting beyond the jurisdiction.
And then a follow-up question is, since it was not signed, was it in force?
The 95 agreement, or this one?
Yeah, given that it was not signed by the council.
What, what wasn't signed?
You said it was not signed by the council?
It was signed by the chiefs, right?
Yes, yes.
Does that mean it was in force?
I'm frankly not sure what our code provided in 1995, but what it provides now is that an intergovernmental agreement should be signed by the mayor and approved by the council. No, I wouldn't make it say it wasn't in force.
It's in force.
It was approved for the law back then.
Okay.
Councilmember Clay?
So, a couple of things comes, come to mind about the interagency agreement, and one is the, the incident that happened to the mayor in Berwin?
Berwin Heights.
Heights, where the, they had the county police that came into the city.
Yeah, the SWAT team.
Yeah, the SWAT team. So I guess I would ask, you know, is this the kind of thing that would keep that from happening in Tacoma Park?
If you look at the original agreement, you look at the one now, we, because I ran narcotics for quite a few years in the county, we would notify Tacoma Park before we would hit a residence. So before we'd hit, they would be notified we were hitting a residence, and to be quite honest with you, I don't think what happened there could happen here. I really believe that.
The, the agreement would provide a notification to the local department, and I'm sure, frankly, in the mayor of Berwin Heights' response, they should have notified the Berwin Heights Police, too.
They should, that they should have.
Oh, they should have, definitely, 100 percent.
You generally, we have generally, not, not just you personally, but the police department and city have generally good relations with the county around those issues and sharing information.
They always notify us before the next, you get a narcotics search, when actually they'll notify us when they're doing an activity that's going to be bordering into the city, which does happen periodically. That's never been an issue.
I believe there is a specific, 2.7, it specifically talks about giving the, each, each department giving the other department reasonable advance notice of narcotics investigation.
It doesn't define what that is, but it says...
Well, it does say four hours.
Four hours, so then okay.
Unless, except for extrajun or emergency circumstances. No less than.
And I, I know there were a number of years put in by the jurisdiction attorneys through the council of governments in trying to come up with the various agreements for cooperation among police departments across state lines. Does this tie in in any way to those agreements?
Yeah, yeah, those are mutual aid agreements. This isn't technically considered a mutual aid agreement, but more setting forth the jurisdiction of each department. It might lead to various mutual aid agreements.
And is your sense that that overall mutual aid agreement that was worked out, would that cover this, or are there mutual aid agreements separate from this among jurisdictions within a state?
Mutual aid agreements that are in place now have worked for many years, and there isn't a problem. I mean, we know, our officers are trained in what they can do and what they can't do in mutual aid agreements, which is part of our directives and a part of being an accredited department, that everything meets that standard, so that, that hasn't been an issue. I think there, we reviewed them in putting this together, and there's not...
They don't conflict.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Robinson?
I'm looking at 3 dot 4 and just trying to get a sense, I did a, I mean, I've read this briefly, but 3 dot 4 talks about folks from the county, officers from the county coming into the city, and my reading is that they are responsible once they're in our city, but that only, that only relates to backup or assistance, or in an emergency, or when directed by the county police commander, or an on-duty county supervisor. So we can ask them to come in for, for backup.
Correct.
If we can ask them to come in if it's an emergency. And then the third part is that if the county police commander or on-duty county police supervisor asks them to come in, they could come in. Do I, do I have that right?
They can only come in if we request them.
Okay, okay, and once they're in, and if we ask them, that request will be evaluated by the county police commander before he allows them in or tells them, assigns them. And then finally, the county police officer controls a scene until the first city police officer arrives on the scene, and, and at that point, unless they're asked to stay, they will leave. That's my reading of this. To some extent, that seems kind of core or central to the handoff of responsibilities and the requests for assistance, so I'm just reiterating that to make sure I have it right.
You're correct, and it happens quite a bit.
I see, okay, thank you.
And there's a somewhat parallel provision in 2.2 for the other way around, the city police going into the, the county.
I got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this resolution? Double-check one more time, any council questions or comments? Okay, and we have moved the resolution, correct? Okay, so all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you both. We now move to the consent agenda. It's a five-item agenda, has a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of online rent stabilization software, resolution providing for an appointment to the Personnel Appeals Board, resolution providing for appointments to the Tacoma Park Board of Elections, a resolution providing for appointments to the Recreation Committee, and a resolution providing for appointments to the Commission on Landlord-Tenet Affairs.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snapper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously, yes?
Can I call the roll?
Oh, I had it marked that way, and it's gotten moving so fast, went right on by. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Now it passes unanimously. We'll take a short five-minute break, and we'll come back for our last item, work session
Streetscape improvements along Carroll Avenue. We've also been successful in securing funding for some of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor initiatives, some site improvement grants, some placemaking activity, that type of thing. This year, while the state's secured funding that's comparable to the amount of funds they received last year, it's still fairly tight. They have about two, or excuse me, $4.2 million that are available for capital funds, and then a quarter of a million dollars for operating funds, which is fairly tight, and frankly, operating projects are pretty, fairly not a minimal dollar amount that they will award. They're doing something different this year, and I think in part in recognition of the limited resources that are available, they're soliciting letters of intent from eligible applicants to kind of get, gauge what types of projects are coming in and to do some preliminary vetting of those projects, if you will, so that one doesn't necessarily go through the whole application process, which is fairly likely, only to learn that, you know, it's really not a good project, or you've asked for three-quarters of the operating funds, and there's no way you're going to get three-quarters of the operating funds that are available. What we've done is ident, or notify members of the community that we've worked with in the past or are currently working with, and see if there are any projects that they might be interested in partnering with us on, that would be eligible for community legacy. What we were looking for are projects that could be completed within two years and started by the end of December, which is a fairly tight turnaround timeframe from past community legacy projects. We have some that were awarded, funds were awarded in 2004, and we're now just wrapping up them. We're making significant progress, and that has not been a problem, but they're trying to get the money in the door and out the door. So we've been looking for projects that are sort of in progress, or there's a definite commitment that it would get done. We've solicited application, or ideas from some of the local nonprofit housing providers. We've contacted Historic Tacoma, the Tacoma-Lanley Crossroads People, Shell Tacoma Business Association, Liz Lerman Dance Exchange, and certainly have gotten a variety of projects ranging from energy-efficient improvements that MHP would like to undertake at Maple Towers, which is just down the road, that their current... which is just down the road, that their current budget would not allow. Similar types of improvements for the properties that HRC is, uh, is purchasing on Aspen Court. Liz Thurman Dance Exchange is looking at, um, helping to find, identify funding to wrap up some of their improvements to their building.
Some of their projects?
Excuse me?
They're looking for funding to do what?
Um, if you recall, when they first started, a couple of years ago, they went through and did a huge renovation of the interior of their building.
Aren't they in DC?
No. And they're looking at finishing up that project as kind of a phase, phase to endeavor. The CDA has proposed a couple of projects ranging from a website that would be targeted specifically to their, um, members, to stormwater management project, to energy audits. And then staff internally is looking at, um, continuing some of the New Hampshire Avenue facade program. I'm pretty much set, we've been, um, been promoting and doing some additional placemaking. And then also, um, looking at find, uh, assisting a redevelopment project up in Flower and Piney Branch. What we'd like tonight is to get some sense from the council in terms of, are there projects out there that you would have a prior, or would place a priority importance on? Generally, and we can sort of narrow down the scope of the projects we've pulled together at this point. Are there specific projects you would like us to explore with the state to see if they're eligible or financially feasible? Any input would be greatly appreciated. Uh, the letter of intent has to be submitted to the state on the fifteenth of this month. And then we would come back to the council before the actual application is submitted in July to get your additional feedback and going through and ranking your priorities and projects.
A quick question? The letter of intent is, do we have to name the project?
Yes. Included as an, um, an attachment with your agenda package?
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a new process for them and it looks like it's fairly, um, brevity is what they're looking for, but it's very specific as far as the budget is. And there is an expectation, or our experience has been that the more successful projects have some sort of matching component.
What is eight four three five Piney Branch Road?
Um, it's one of the, it's the only corner up there that's actually been to Tacoma Park. So China, Chinese, uh.
Chinese Carryout Restaurant on the corner of Flower and Piney Branch.
Yes, the line.
And they also own the, uh, cement block building next door. City sold it several years ago.
Right.
And they have, uh, talked about plans to.
Read about.
Do things there to expand their business. I'm sure he has names and knows more about that.
What they're looking at doing, um, is taking that existing facility, it's a two-story, looks like a big old barn, kind of, really not that architecturally attractive, um, and redeveloping that for a multi-level, uh, commercial and office space. And they're going through the planning process right now.
Would a project, um, you know, considering that the fire station is under construction, is gonna be finished at some definable point in the future, it, it would something around, um, something related to the junction in that site? Uh, I know in the past we've talked about funding a charrette for that area, but helping us figure out what to do there, is that something that would be eligible?
That was included in my list in the memo, um, when I was talking about, or alluded to, the development of content plan for sites in old Tacoma.
Oh, that.
In retrospect, it would, it would be an eligible project, but the cost of doing a charrette, our recent experience has been that if you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars, if you do a, a full charrette with the transportation studies, the economic impact studies, the, um, the whole design work, the community outreach and everything. We could submit an application for that requesting the entire, um, cost be, uh, a grant through the state's, um, operating capital. But the reality is, if they only have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's highly unlikely that they would fund one project for a hundred thousand dollars. In retrospect, what may make sense is, given the timing of that whole project, if the city were interested in pursuing that project, if council were interested in pursuing that project, to budget next, in the next fiscal year, matching funds that we could then use to leverage additional, um, planning monies from another agency. I mean, we can submit an application now, but frankly, I don't see it getting funded.
Councilmember Clay?
What's the seventy-four eleven Aspen Court?
That's one of the three properties that hopefully HS, HLC owns two of the properties in that corner.
I know, I know the, I know the property.
Right.
But what's the?
They're looking at doing, um, they're gonna be coming before the council to, uh, request support or endorsement of their purchase of that particular property. The way the law has to tenant opportunity to purchase, the tenants have an opportunity to purchase the property or the county or an agency of the county. And, um, they're gonna be coming back requesting your endorsement for that, that purchase. And I believe that's on the, they'll be making a presentation next week with a resolution of endorsement on the twenty-second. What, when we had, um, solicit proposals from different people, or just basically ideas, they had pulled together a fairly extensive list of improvements that would need to be made to that specific building. Um, overall, they're investing, or looking at investing about six hundred thousand dollars in those three properties in the circle. Of that, about a hundred and fifty would be, um, for Aspen Court. And we're looking at, asking to look at projects that would improve the energy efficiency of the building or, um, improve its contrib, visual contribution to the neighborhood, that kind of thing.
If those, um, if you guys haven't been up into that little pocket there in Ward Two, the access is off of, um, Aspen.
It's off Sligo Creek Parkway.
Yeah, we go up Sligo and then Aspen is a little cul-de-sac and then in, Aspen Court is there. Um, there've been a lot of, uh, problems with, um, drug sales and, and the kinds of related crime that happens around the neighborhood, that kind of the petty break-ins into the cars, there's like a little pattern out and around that site. So, it would be supportive of something that would improve the property to help reduce a lot of that criminal activity that happens around there. And I'm hopeful that the purchase of the properties, um, by the HOC will, would, would be helpful because the, the folks that have owned, the, there's a set of three buildings that are all one property that, um, have just essentially let them deteriorate into the ground, but that's not seventy-four eleven though. So, I, I would be supportive of, of that if, if it was towards that end. And if making them more energy efficient makes them more appealing and, and provides for, um, uh, a, a stronger community, I would support that. But in general, I, I'm really more interested in, um, components that, further economic development activities at this time, over, even, even over some of the affordable, affordable housing activities.
Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Snipper.
These are, these are grants, not loans, am I right?
If you request a loan, you'd get a higher rating, but we try not to.
You'd get a higher what?
Get a higher.
Higher rating, so you'd be more likely to get the money.
We tend to stay away from that.
Okay. The timeline I see is that the, the, uh, intent, letter of intent is, is next week. Is it, is that after today? Is, is it?
It's a week from today.
A week from today?
Yeah.
So, we have to, we have to, we can't consider this and come back to you then, but we have, um, and then when does the money have to be spent?
Um, they're looking at, is it two, well, it's a multi-step. The letter of intent would be, is due June fifteenth. And then based on that feedback, we would be, um, given a month to submit an application that would, and we would come back to the council sometime in July before that's due, so you'd actually see these things again.
The applications.
Right. Um, they try very hard to turn the projects around within two months, but our experience has been, it often takes six months to actually get the contract and everything like that. But they definitely want the project to be started the end of December and finished within two years.
With, to start it in the end of December and finish within two years?
Correct.
Okay. I, you say here that adding green projects to our list, do you have a sense that that's something that would fly? Green projects would fly?
We're looking at projects or ideas that the council might have that we can kind of add to the list as we're going through and pulling together information required for the letter of intent. So, for example, the, um, project that I had referenced, that council member Wright had chat, or asked about for the charrette in the old Tacoma area, Tacoma Junction area. That would be one that we would pull off this list just because in retrospect, it's not, it's not very viable because of the financing associated with it. So if there are projects that you have, um, would like us to explore, we can do that through the letter of intent process and then come back to you in July, letting you know, it's not gonna make the cut, or it has, where do you?
But my, but my question is, you put green on this list, um, in addition to the priority considerations, we were adding green projects to our list. Is that, that's from them?
It's one of the criteria for this program.
That's from them, right?
Yeah.
They're saying that. Um, so, so adding, having green projects is okay for us to?
Correct.
At least ask for. And, um, what's your sense of our trying to leverage, um, private money in, in, or in matching energy efficiency upgrades for people's houses and that sort of thing? Does that have any?
We, um, actually, that's what we've been doing for the facade and the site improvement grants that we've been giving, that were funded in part through this program in prior years. So, for example, some of the projects on New Hampshire Avenue, it's a grant to the business up to a certain dollar amount. And then above that, it's a matching dollar grant. So we use those private dollars to leverage the state funding.
It's like facade grants, except for energy efficiency, is that right?
You could do that. Right. The challenge would be how to administer and manage, or, yeah, how to manage the project.
Well, you're a good manager.
I'm a very, well, occasionally I'm a very good manager, but I don't know very much about energy efficiency, but we can always learn.
Well, that's what I would encourage, is you to learn that and, and manage those kinds of projects.
Councilmember Snipper?
Yes, could you talk a little bit more about the eighty-four thirty-five Piney Branch Road project? Cause I know a fair amount about it, what are you?
This is Sue Wong's project up there?
Yeah. The idea we partner with her and?
There are some redevelopment costs that are fairly extensive. It could be the fee that's required by Park and Planning to get a site plan approved. It could be, um, for, uh, additional permits or engineering requirements or transportation studies, whatever might be required by the planning department to get that project through the, the review process. So we're looking at different ways that we can kind of offset some of the upfront costs for the smaller developers because frankly, that's been problematic for a couple of people in the area that, once they see the price before they even break ground, it scares them away.
Well, I like this one a lot and I, I, not surprisingly, it's in my ward, but, um, um, cause I, I do agree. I think the commercial revitalization is a bit higher priority. And I wondered, uh, building what you were saying, Councilmember, Councilmember Robinson, was, um, could we add some green stuff to it? Uh, that building in particular, uh, needs to be quite extensively renovated and, um, it would make sense to spend a little extra money and make sure that, you know, windows, doors, air conditioning, there's a whole host of relatively, you know, you add a small amount and you can, you can really leverage some stuff.
And we, um, we can investigate that with.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you. And, um, appreciate your coming here with some proposals, some ideas on what we can, uh, potentially submit requests for. I agree with Councilmember Clay and Mr. Snipper that, uh, economic development, I think is, uh, should be our, uh, primary focus this year. Uh, I have to say that I'm, um, a little disappointed that we are, at this point in time, with the, uh, needing to have something to the state, uh, within a, I think you said the twenty-fifth of June, something like that?
Fifteenth.
The letter of intent, which is basically, here's our ideas, is due on Monday.
Yeah, uh, I'm hopeful that the, uh, one year, the council is gonna, uh, start laying plans for these types of things ahead of time so we have more opportunity to think about it and be more strategic in the, in the way that we, uh, consider these types of opportunities. And that's not, uh, that's not targeted to you, it's the, uh, complain about the way that, uh, that we do business and that we unfortunately includes me.
Just, just in response to that, um, one of the things that we did do when we were soliciting proposals from people is to look at the strategic plan that you have recently adopted, to sort of target entities that might be, um, working towards some of the shared goals that you had, in terms of energy efficiency or affordable housing, that type of thing. So we, I recognize that the short turnaround time, um, we have tried to accommodate that and wish there was, there was more.
Uh, I would say that as far as the, uh, the development aspect goes, uh, I think, um, some of the opportunities maybe make more sense to me than others. And I, what I'm thinking of is if the, I think this year especially with the economy the way it is, if there's some assistance that we can, uh, provide through this program to, uh, businesses that are, um, you know, going through some difficult economic times, not that we could be providing money to, uh, for their operations, but, but that we could be helping them with programs, uh, development programs, enhancing their, uh, appearance of their business or the, uh, the structure in some way that's gonna enhance the neighborhood and enhance the overall, uh, viability of the business, uh, neighborhood. I think that's, uh, a priority. And I'm less inclined to say that, well, we just, uh, you know, help and add on something to existing plans of the organization that's kind of thriving this year, cause many organizations are not thriving. So I don't know if that's specific enough.
That's very helpful, thank you.
And, uh, and for the future, I would like us to be able to, uh, think about how, if, uh, community legacy money, uh, that might have come, might come to us in the future, if there might be programs that we could put together in the city to assist some of the homeowners too that are, uh, in need of, uh, uh, some help in getting their homes, uh, in the condition if they're, uh, on limited incomes, things like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
I just wanted to say at a high level, I also agree with the idea of prioritizing economic development. I like it if there's a green aspect and I'm very supportive of this specific project in Councilmember Snipper's ward. I know that in the past, um, money from community legacy has gone to, on a number of occasions, the old town area. And, and I know that Councilmember Snipper has, at different times, uh, expressed a desire to have projects funded in his ward. And I, um, if there's a project there that's, he's supportive of and, and is ready to go, I, I'm definitely a supporter of that as well.
Sounds like it's fairly unanimous that, uh, we want to support, uh, economic development projects with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the last item on our agenda is a proposed closed session. We'll bookend this meeting with closed session. And this is a vote to go into closed session and consider the acquisition of real property located at thirty-six Philadelphia Avenue for a public purpose and to consult with council to obtain legal advice on the acquisition of thirty-six Philadelphia Avenue pursuant to annotated code of Maryland, state government article ten dash five oh eight, A three, A seven, and A two.
Will we go into closed session?
Second.
And to discuss personnel matters related to city committees pursuant to annotated code of Maryland, state government article ten dash five oh eight, A one. Aye.
You took a breath, I thought you were done.
I know.
Well, does the motion still stand?
So I think, will you amend the motion for both of those?
Yes.
And that was, since I gotta fill out this form, uh, moved by who and seconded by who? It was moved by Councilmember Clay?
Me and Josh.
Or Ruben, depending on who's here who's working.
I can't hear all the way down there.
Thank you. All those in favor of that motion going to closed session, please raise a hand. And anybody opposed? Thank you. Yes, it's unanimous.